This meeting is called to order. I will now conduct an attendance roll call. Please signify by saying present. Councilmember Aldama.
He's here. He's occupied.
His voice has changed. He's here.
He's here.
I see him. Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Mounard.
Present.
Councilmember Tomachoff.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Present.
And the chair is present. Ms. Bowers, will you please introduce item one?
Fiscal year 2022 budget workshop.
Well, good morning, Vice Mayor, members of the council. We're here to provide you the most recent information regarding our CIP. And I'll turn it this time over to Lasek Camacho, our Director of Budget and Finance. And of course, she'll be assisted by Amy Lindsay, our Budget Administrator.
Good morning, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Today is our fifth budget workshop on capital improvement plan. For today's presentation, we'll cover the updated draft 10-year CIP, which includes additions and changes from the last budget workshop. We'll also cover the 10-year and the 1-year draft capital improvement plan. Ms. Lindsay will cover the project summaries by project type. The projects that you'll see in this presentation are the same projects you saw over the last four budget workshop. If there's a change in one of the projects, the project summaries will have a summary of the changes. The changes will cover any changes in the budget, changes in the funding source, any movements of budgets from one year to another. We are looking for council consensus in today's presentation on the 10-year draft CIP, also looking for consensus on the additions and changes to the CIP that we'll be presenting This slide covers the two new projects that were added to the 10-year CIP. The first one is the general government capital project, which is a placeholder funding for capital projects funded by one-time revenues. The project can be found on page 60 of your binder. There will be future workshops to discuss the specific projects with the city council. The second project that was added to the CIP is the programming study for the meeting space in the Yucca District. This project can be found on page 98 of your binder. And this project is development impact fee funded. This slide is a pie chart of the 10-year CIP by project type. As you can see, the total draft 10-year CIP is about 1.3 billion. The largest component by project type is the streets projects. The second largest is water projects. And the third largest is facility maintenance project. This slide is also a pie chart of the 10-year CIP by funding source. Same information, but presented by funding source. By funding source, the largest component is enterprise funds, which consists of landfill, solid waste, water, and wastewater. The second largest is geo bonds or general obligation bonds funded projects. And the third largest is pay-as-you-go or cash-funded capital projects. The next two slides are the pie charts on the 1-year draft CIP. So this information is only for fiscal year 2022. Again, this pie chart is by project type. The total draft fiscal year 22 CIP is 289 million. The largest component is facility maintenance projects. The second largest component is streets projects. And the third largest component is water projects. This slide is a pie chart of the fiscal year 22 or the 1-year draft CIP by funding source. The same information as the last slide, but presented by funding source. The largest component is enterprise funds, capital projects. The second largest is pay-as-you-go. And the third largest is general obligation bond-funded project.
Vice Mayor, members of the council, just as a reminder, we present that information because when council adopts the budget, while you're adopting a draft 10-year CIP or a 10-year CIP, only that first year, next year, will be appropriated to actually be spent.
And with that, I'll turn over the presentation to Ms. Lindsay.
Good morning, Vice Mayor, members of the council. The first slide that you see here is a summary of airport projects. Airport projects begin on page five of the CIP binder that you received last week. This includes all projects within the airport project type. And one thing I'd like to mention about all the slides that you're going to see with regards to the projects in the CIP, the carryover dollar amount could potentially change when you see the total budget on April 20th. Departments are still working through the carryover calculation process. And some of those dollar amounts may be expended before the June 30th of the current year. So those dollar amounts may decrease. The total fiscal year 22 for the airport projects is approximately 7.7 million. And unless council has any questions about any of the projects on these two slides, we'll move forward to the arts program. The arts program can be found on page 25 of your CIP binder. The total amount for fiscal year 22 for arts projects is about 1.2 million. There's one project within this particular project type. And unless there are any questions about art projects, we can continue on to other funding or other project types. The next project type are the drainage projects, which can be found on page 29 of your CIP binder. The fiscal year 22 total, including carryover, is approximately 4.4 million. And as a reminder, additional voter authorization is required for drainage projects beginning in fiscal year 25. And there will be a council item of special interest where we're discussing the bond election on April 27th. So we'll go through a lot of that information at that particular time. And if there aren't any questions about drainage, we can move on to the next project type. This next slide demonstrates changes within the facility maintenance project type. These items can be found on page 37 or begin on page 37 of your CIP binder. The first item that's on this list is the Glendale Operations Campus. The total project has decreased by approximately 9.7 million. There's 4.8 million that came out of fiscal year 22 and 3.1 in fiscal year 23, went up by 3.1, excuse me, went down by 2.7 in fiscal year 24, down also by 2.6 million in fiscal year 25, and decreased by 2.7 million in fiscal year 26. That project can be found on page 40 of your CIP binder. The next change that's listed on this slide is the addition of the general government capital project, which is located on page 58 of your binder. And this is the placeholder project that Ms. Camacho mentioned earlier that's a placeholder for one-time revenues that we've received that can be used for capital projects.
Just a second. Councilmember Tomachoff.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So is this the American Recovery Funding anticipated amount? Or what is this money?
Vice Mayor, councilmember Tomachoff, yes, that's correct.
Okay. If I could, Vice Mayor, I'd like to have staff walk us through the, I know there's a lot of parameters and requirements, not right now, but I mean, at a future workshop to give us an outline of, at least what I've seen so far is the money's to be used for water infrastructure, homeless, COVID relief, that type of thing. So before any plans are made for this money, I'd like to have somebody bring to a workshop and present to us, because I thought it was 60 million or 61 million, this is more money than I thought we were getting, and then kind of walk us through the guidelines that the federal government has issued for what this money can and cannot be used for.
Vice Mayor, members of the council, that's the reason why we put it in as a placeholder. And it is around 60 million. The additional funding is the proceeds from the sale of Glen Lakes. And so that is the plan, is to sit down with council in a workshop, talk through sort of what the funds can be used for and that type of thing. That's why it's sitting there sort of as a placeholder until we have an opportunity to go through that with the council.
Vice Mayor, if I could, I guess my point is, and no, I'm not trying to offend anybody, but my point is rather than bringing us, I mean, I know you guys went to a lot of trouble and did a lot of work last time when we got federal funding and basically brought us a list of projects. But before we get to that point, I'd like for the council to actually have an opportunity to share some visions and objectives maybe that we'd like to do with the money and also to understand the parameters for what the money can be used for before we get to the point of being brought a list of projects. That's what I'm requesting. Whether there's a consensus to do it that way or not, I don't know. But thank you.
Welcome. Councilmember Aldama.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just heard something that I wasn't aware of. And so pardon me if I was just not paying attention back when that decision was made, but kind of felt myself, my heart racing a little bit. We're using funds from the sales of Glen Lakes for these projects? And when was that decided? That's what I just heard.
Again, Mayor, or Vice Mayor, members of the council, this is just a large placeholder. In order to spend any of the funds, so any of the funds from Glen Lakes and any of the funds from that American Recovery Act, we have to have budget appropriation. So we put a placeholder amount in a project. It will be determined later what all of those funds go for through a process with the city council. So it's simply here to have the necessary appropriation so that when we've decided or you've decided what the city is to spend it on, it will be able to be spent on those things.
Thank you, Vicki. I didn't realize that, and I hear what you're saying. It's a parking lot fund for that money. But this council should know that. And we're hearing it today, but I didn't realize that was going to happen. I hear what you're saying. You're putting money in the bank, and it's a parking lot until we decide. But we should know that that money's going into that parking lot. I was not aware maybe the council was.
Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Aldama. So there's been a lot going on, obviously, since this, but when we came back last fall and we outlined the approximately $27 million that we felt that the first round of COVID funding was available, we did indicate to the council that we were expecting to close in December on Glen Lakes. And so really, this is just kind of now acknowledging that amount. We did close, I think, around December 10th on that, but we'd already had dealt with the, you know, kind of the increased projects not including in that amount of money. So this is just saying, look, at the end of the day, if you want to put it back towards parks, you want to put it towards whatever priority, put it back into fund balance. There's a placeholder here for expenditure authority, but until the council identifies their priorities, it would just stay there.
Vice Mayor, if I may, thank you for that. So I recall a meeting with yourself and members of your budget team, and I believe the Vice Mayor and I were there because it affected our district community centers. And you laid out just a great plan on where funding was going to go and which projects we were going to have. And at the end of the meeting, I knew that you didn't include the dollars for Glen Lakes in that sale. It was a surprise to you that we had not included that money. The money was still in escrow, and it had not cleared yet. And in that meeting, I asked, well, where are those funds going to go? Most likely to Parks and Recreation. Now I'm hearing they're in a parking lot. I'm not hearing that we're going to use it for these, but it's a parking lot. So I think we need to have a robust conversation about the sale of Glen Lakes. So, period. I didn't realize it was going to be in a parking lot. We decide later. I thought it was going to be that pot of money. We would decide that pot of money from the sale.
Yeah, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Aldama. So the park projects that were identified last fall did not include that funding amount. Probably what I was trying to indicate in our conversation was, you know, based on the last several years of discussion from the parks, I know with the council, I know the parks have been a high priority and that I think I was trying to indicate it's likely that's where that money would go. But ultimately, it really is the decision. decision of the council.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
Councilmember Clark?
I, I would just like to comment on this discussion. Several weeks ago, we learned that we would be receiving additional dollar amounts from the federal government. I, I quite frankly have no problem with, as Councilmember Aldama said, putting it in a parking lot. And with regard to the sale of Glen Lakes, we knew that eventually we would see the proceeds from that. And that too has not been determined as to what it will be used for in, in our final deliberations. The parking of money, no matter under which project it goes, is still the parking of money. And, and I, for one, was aware that this money was coming. And I would assume that the rest of council knew that the money was coming. We just might not have known the exact dollar amounts. I don't see this being handled any differently than any other large sum of money that we have received through the feds. So I'm comfortable with it being here. I'm comfortable with making a decision later on. I understand the objective, and I, I would not expect staff to have presented us any other detailed information at this point. Thank you.
Welcome. Councilmember Tomachov?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just want to kind of, before we move on from this, and I totally understand the placeholder, if it's, there's no appropriation, we don't, we're going to, we would end up scrambling like we were last time, trying to find money to move out of fund balance, and so we can spend some of this money. And I, and there's, and there's a lot of need in the community for, for a lot of this money still. So I totally understand that, and I'm not questioning it. But I wanted to know whether there's a consensus from my colleagues on having a discussion about the, you know, what is this funding eligible for, and, and really talking through, you know, our, our vision for what this money should go to for the better of our community before it's kind of divvied up and then brought to us to a workshop. So I wanted to know if there was a consensus to, to at least have a workshop on this American Recovery Plan, I think, funding, before it's kind of, you know, divvied up and brought back to a workshop.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Turner?
I would concur on that, and I'd like to see if there's a consensus. I think it's, I realize sometimes everything happens in one meeting. It's always uncomfortable to me when it does, but I think it would be wise for us to first have a discussion about the concepts, and then we later have a discussion about the projects. And that gives us time to be thinking about what we might, how we might prioritize the, the money as it comes to us. Thank you.
Welcome. Councilmember Clark?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I assumed that that would occur. I don't think we need to call for a special meeting. I, I assume that when this money is ready to be spent, that, that it would come before council with a discussion by council of prioritization and where they would like to see the money spent. So I respect Councilmember Tomachov, but I think she's asking for something that we're going to get anyhow. Thank you.
Welcome. Go ahead, Councilmember.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm not, I'm not talking about having a discussion about specific projects. I'm talking about letting us understand what the federal guidelines are for the money. I don't, I don't know what they are. I don't know whether even we've been told what they are yet specifically. There's, there's guidelines for, for how this money's to be spent, I know that. And that, just a vision for us, like where, what type of things would we like to accomplish with this? Not saying, here's a list, and then saying, here's staff, here's our vision for what we'd like this money to accomplish in the community, and then let them, let them, you know, make something out of that. So I'm not saying I want to say, you know, here's what I want, I want, you know, A, B, C, D. That's not what I'm talking about. I'm just saying, we, there's, it's a lot of money. We can do a lot of things in the community with the money. So as a group, we have an opportunity to have a conversation about our vision for how this money would be the best way to spend this money for the community. And then let, then let staff get to work on, on figuring out, you know, the detail part of that. That's all I'm talking about. I'm talking big picture for us, and then giving them sort of an idea of where we're at, what we'd like to see happen in the community, and then, and then, and then they can, you know, get to work on that. So just I wanted to clarify what I'm talking about.
Go ahead and proceed, please.
As I mentioned earlier, the facilities maintenance projects begin on page 37 of your CIP binders. General obligation bond-funded government facilities projects will require additional voter authorization beginning in fiscal year '25. And unless there are any specific questions on facility maintenance projects, we can One thing I'd like to mention also about the facility maintenance projects is the fiscal year '22 total, including carryover, is approximately $78.5 million. The finance projects begin on page 65 of your CIP binders. The one project that's in here is the general fund project, or general fund project contingency project, which is for the AZ Cares Fund projects that we've been discussing a little bit previously, excuse me. And the fiscal year total, including carryover, in this fund is approximately $1.5 million. The landfill projects begin on page 69 of your CIP binders. There will be the need for additional voter authorization in order to complete the North Cell Liner project. And unless there are any questions on landfill, the total for fiscal year '22, including carryover, is approximately $16.4 million. The next slide that you'll see is changes within the library project, program. We've added a project that's on page 93 of your CIP binders.
Could we go back again to the landfill? You said there's going to be voter authorization required for the North Cell?
Yes, that's correct.
When would that happen?
Mayor, Members of the Council?
This is the year '22, I would think we'd have to go out for a bond this fall or something.
Yes, Mayor, or Vice Mayor, Members of the Council, that's correct. The earliest that we could, well, we could go out for an election in 2022, and so we, yes, so we do have a plan later, I think sometime in April or May, to come back to council to lay out another plan for the next bond election and, and formation of the Bond Committee and that type of things, in anticipation of doing another election in 2022.
So you would ask for an election in 2022? Okay, thank you.
Councilmember?
Since Councilmember Milner brought that up, so on the North Cell, do, do we have the $7.7 million and we're able to move forward, I mean, through, through 2022? And then I, then there's a, there's a little bit of money, and then there's more money in 2026? So we're funded through 2025 with where we are right now?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Tomachov, that's correct. We would not need additional voter authorization until fiscal year '25. So the, the project that was added to the library program is on page 93 of your binder. There was $25,000 that was added for a meeting space needs study in the Yucca District, and that project is funded with library development impact fees. The next slide shows all the projects that are within the library program. Fiscal year '22, including carryover, is $250,000. And additional general obligation bond voter authorization would be required to complete projects beginning in fiscal year '26.
Vice Mayor?
Councilmember Clark?
I have a curious question. We're, we're, we're indicating all of this carryover. What if all of the carryover is not spent by July 1? What happens to it? Is it carried over for another year, or does it get absorbed somewhere?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Clark, it does get carried over, and it stays appropriated within the same project. The next program are the parking lot projects. As you can see on this slide, there are no projects included in fiscal year '22. The first project is actually in fiscal year '26. So unless there's any particular questions on that program, we can move on to parks. The parks projects begin on page 103 of your CIP binder. The programmed projects in the CIP will require additional voter authorization beginning in fiscal year '26. There are several slides that include parks projects, there's about six of them. The total for fiscal year '22, including carryover, is $21.2 million. And unless anyone has specific projects about parks, we can continue through the program.
Councilmember Tomachov?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I do have a question, because I didn't see it on the, the change summary, but the amphitheater renovations in the new binder are still showing under parks. And I don't, I know there was some discussion about moving that over to cultural facilities and moving that up, freeing up the money for parks in the, you know, in fiscal year 2026 or sooner, if that ends up working out. And there's, there's, there's not a, there isn't anything for cultural facilities, but I thought we had, had, I know we had a robust discussion about moving that parks, the amphitheater funding out of parks, and also about moving it up, that because the funding for City Hall, waiting for City Hall, we haven't identified a funding source for City Hall to combine that with the City Hall renovations, but we have identified a funding source to move forward with the amphitheater. So, you know, the city, with the City Hall, where is this? City Hall, there's really no money available for City Hall until, you know, several years out, at least at this time, but we, we have a funding source now for the amphitheater. So I wanted to have a discussion about that, that I'd like to see that moved up. I thought that's what we had talked about, and go ahead and, and move forward with the amphitheater, and then figure out a funding source for City Hall later on.
Vice Mayor?
Yes?
Well, Kevin, you had something to say?
Mr., I just want to answer the question. So Vice Mayor, Members of the Council, again, the discussion was around the, the ability to use the funding for there, which we did come back and say it can be used one time. We haven't had a specific instruction by the council to accelerate. My recommendation would be is we're going to be having some discussions with the council here this spring regarding the, the City Hall renovations, and I think that would be an appropriate time to tie that in, because you may want to decide to align your timing of the amphitheater if the council chooses to move forward with a, a significant renovation of, of the City Hall. Otherwise, if you want us to move it farther forward as an independent project, that just takes the council direction to do that.
Mayor?
Well, then, Councilmember Clark?
I, I concur with Councilmember Tomachov. We did have a discussion about this. We did seek ways of moving this project up. We did talk about seeking funding through the cultural facilities, cultural facilities appropriation. I, I still believe that the sentiment on this council is to see the amphitheater not necessarily be tied to a total package on City Hall renovation, because as Councilmember Tomachov indicated, that could be several years out. Whereas renovation of the amphitheater as soon as possible will most definitely impact downtown, and that is important to all of us. So I support Councilmember Tomachov and her assessment from our previous meetings.
Vice Mayor?
Well, Councilmember Tomachov?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. The, the, the idea of moving City Hall, the renovation of City Hall up has, I think, is tied to these American Recovery Funds, and, and, you know, I don't, I don't know if that's the council's vision for what to do with that money. So we were told at the beginning of this meeting, you're looking for a consensus from us on the CIP, and in order, so we need to decide that now. You know, and we can, I guess, change our mind later, but if we don't put it in here, then, then we approve the CIP without it. And I, I believe, as Councilmember Clark, and I believe, all of us believe, that downtown doesn't have a few more years to wait. We need to, we need to act now on moving forward. I know we're going to have the Visioning Retreat on Friday, but we were told that basically you're looking for our consensus on the CIP, and we did have a discussion about moving it up and, and moving it into cultural facilities. So I'd like to see that. I think it's the right thing to do for downtown. And, you know, if, if we end up tying it to City Hall later on down the road, this doesn't prevent us from doing that. What, what we would be doing today would literally not have any effect if we decide to spend that money, you know, if that's what the council decides to do, to spend that money on the renovation of City Hall and tying the amphitheater into it. Moving this culture facilities up to fiscal year 2022 and 2023 would have, wouldn't change anything anyway. But if we don't do it, and we end up not using, doing City Hall, and City Hall's a few years out, then we don't have a funding source for the amphitheater. So that's my point.
Councilmember Aldama?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yes, I too clearly remember a discussion with regard to the, the funding for the amphitheater. I, I remember myself mentioning to tie it to the city building, but then I was told that the building was so far out, that project, that it would take years for them to be built together. So I too support moving the amphitheater up. It is, it's a crucial, crucial piece for downtown. But I think I've, I've heard Kevin in a few meetings, he's got some plans for doing that, but if it's in here that it's going to be postponed for later, then we need to move it up. So I, I agree with the two council members. Then I have a, I have a question with regard to Heroes Park Lake. In the carryover, there's 1.2, and then in '22, there's 4.2. Is the carryover just for planning and designing? Can you, can you tell me what, what that's going for? And then will the 4.2 complete the lake?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Aldama, the contract for that has already been approved by council, and we should have a notice to proceed, and starting at the end of April. So the money that you see in carryover is going to be used this year.
And that'll complete the part, it'll be a done deal? Throw fishing rods in there, we're good to go?
Yes, including the FY '22.
Yes, correct. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, Members of the Council. So, yeah, this would be the appropriate time to change this if the council wants to move things up on the, on the amphitheater. Remember that the, that, we really haven't scoped this out since the initial concept back in 2017. So my suggestion would be is that what we have to begin would be, starting in the next fiscal year, would be to start bringing onboard a design team and start looking at the engineering and the design elements, so we can come up with a better baseline budget. We could, we can work with facilities and work with Mr. Friedland to come back and maybe propose putting a portion in the FY '22 that would allow us to engage with the design and kind of the next step of actually making this a project. We can certainly do that. That would just be a change that we can do, accelerate, and, and when you vote on your final budget, there may be one other modification. We can certainly do that. Sounds like that's what the consensus of the council now is to, is to try to get the amphitheater project moving, you know, hopefully start actually becoming a project in FY '22. We can make that happen.
Councilmember Tomachov?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I have a question about the Thunderbird Park improvements. There's $320,000 in carryover. I just had, heard from another resident yesterday who took a spill because the, of the, the condition of the trail. I don't even hike there anymore because it's too slippery. Is that even an eligible thing for trail grooming? I know I asked for, would that be more of a conversation to have during the regular just budget discussions for, I don't know whether trail grooming, I ask for it every year, whether that's eligible for CIP. I know that's part of the plan, but, you know, the erosion and the, and the rocks just, there's more and more and more rocks on the trail, loose rock, and it does make it more dangerous.
Vice Mayor, Members of the Council, I, I believe Mr. Burke is here and may be able to answer your question, but in general, we would not use bond funding for, and capital funding for regular trail maintenance. Now, if there's, there are some exceptions, and, and so every time that we do something, we kind of have to look at it independently and determine, does it rise to the level of capital or not? But I'll, I'll let Mr. Burke weigh in further here.
Good morning. Vice Mayor, Members of the Council, if I understand-
If I could, Vice Mayor, I thought there was a million dollars available in the CIP, in the previous CIP. I don't, I didn't bring my other book with me, but I thought it was in 2023, there was a million dollars, and then I think in 20, there was a million and then four million, and then in the five-plus years out, there was another, it was a total of 11 million in the CIP. What page is that on?
Vice Mayor, members of the council, if you'll give us a minute, we'll look for that.
If I could, Vice Mayor, I'm looking at page 103, and it shows in fiscal year 2022, a million dollars, and then in fiscal year 2023, four million dollars. That's what I thought. And I don't even see the 320,000 in carryover, but that's all I see in this slide, so.
Vice Mayor, members of the council. It's on slide 24.
Vice Mayor, members of the council. It's also projected on the screen. It's about middle of the bottom of the page.
Slide 24. I can't see.
It's the third one up from the bottom on the slide that's being shown, and it's on page 24 of your slide deck.
Okay. They're just different project numbers, is that why?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Well, that's good news then. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Burke. Appreciate it.
Vice Mayor. Councilmember Turner.
Before Mr. Burke leaves, just in case we need him, but perhaps Mr. Friedland can handle this. On slide 26, fourth one up from the bottom, Swarren Ranch Park Fence Painting, still listed at 57,000. I thought we bumped it to 75,000.
Vice Mayor, members of the council. Yes, at the last workshop, we did talk about elevating that and using the cares money to make that difference. And that project is, I believe, underway.
Does that need to be changed in this document?
Vice Mayor, members of the council, that'll be part of the carryover adjustments that occur prior to the end of the fiscal year. So you'll see that adjustment on April 20.
Okay, thank you.
For fiscal year 22, including carryover, the parks program has approximately 21.2 million. And unless there are any more questions, we can move on to public safety. One thing I'd like to add about the parks program is the additional need for voter authorization actually is going to be needed in fiscal year 23 instead of fiscal year 25. So I need to correct my previous statement on that. The public safety projects are on page 59 of your CIP binder. The public safety general obligation bond program has enough existing voter authorization for the entire program, so no additional voter authorization is required. For fiscal year 22, including carryover, there's approximately 8.2 million in projects. And unless there are any questions, we can move on to the next program. The next slide demonstrates changes that occurred within the solid waste program. The first project is the solid waste software process improvement, which originally was on page 179 of your old CIP binder, but now is on page 183. That project had its total dollar amount decreased by $100,000 in fiscal year 22. The next project is the front load commercial trucks. That project was reduced by approximately $49,000 in fiscal year 22. The next project is the side load residential trucks. That project was also reduced by approximately 1.3 million in fiscal year 22. And the fourth and final project that had a change is the bulk trash equipment for residential, and that project was reduced by $682,000 in fiscal year 22 and increased by $422,000 in fiscal year 24 for a total decrease of $260,000. The solid waste projects are on page 181 of your CIP binders, and the fiscal year 22 amount, including carryover, is approximately 2.3 million. And if there aren't any questions, we can move on to streets. There are three projects that changed within the streets program. The first was the 67th and Thunderbird Intersection Improvement Project. That project was removed from the program for a total reduction of 3.2 million. And the next two projects, Street Reconstruction on 75th Avenue, Glendale to Northern, and Street Reconstruction, 83rd Avenue from Glendale to Northern, those two projects were switched. So the appropriation was reduced in fiscal year 23 and then increased in fiscal year 25 for 75th Avenue, Glendale to Northern, and then 83rd Avenue, Glendale to Northern, it was added in 23 and reduced in 25.
Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Clark.
This is a technical question that you may not be able to answer, but Mr. Friedland may be able to answer. Now that we've finally moved up 83rd between Northern and Glendale, which is a mess, will it be done or can it be done prior to the Super Bowl? Because 83rd Avenue is a major reliever for 91st Avenue, and we get a lot of traffic coming down from Northern or north from Camelback. Right now, it occurs during footballers or major special events, we see an overabundance of traffic on 83rd. So my question is, what kind of schedule do we have? And can we anticipate that road being completed prior to the Super Bowl?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Clark. Streets program, the way you see it today, under general obligation bonds, is financed through FY 22. Anything past that needs voter authorization. If a voter authorization happens, perhaps in the fall of 22, I would have to sit with our engineering department to look at a timeframe. For sure, it's programmed to be designed, shelf-ready, if you will, but the 3.3 million that's programmed in FY 23 still would need voter authorization.
Okay, thank you.
The streets program is on page 191 of your CIP binders. As Mr. Friedland mentioned, additional voter authorization is required for general obligation bond-funded streets projects in fiscal year 23. There are six slides of streets projects. The total for fiscal year 22, including carryover, is approximately 63.2 million. Moving on to the transit program. The transit program begins on page 257 of your CIP binder. The FY 22 amount, including carryover, is approximately 1.5 million. The wastewater program begins on page 263 of your CIP binder. And the fiscal year 22 amount, including carryover, is approximately 32 million. And if there are no questions about wastewater, we'll move on to the water projects. Those begin on page 287 of your CIP binder. There's four slides of water projects within the presentation, and the fiscal year 22 amount, including carryover, is approximately 50.3 million.
Councilmember Clark.
I just want to confirm that there is enough, let me put it this way. The projects listed in this slide, CIP, there is enough authorization. Well, you don't, yeah, well, you need a little bit of authorization. But I guess a better question would be, they can be satisfied under the current rate structure? Is that correct?
Vice Mayor, members of the council, the water utility is funded through fiscal year 22. There is a rate study ongoing right now, and so we're going to be coming back to council with some recommendations coming out of that study for the future. But there was a rate increase in January of this year, which should fund us through 22, is my understanding.
Right. So anything beyond fiscal year 22 would require a rate increase?
Vice Mayor, members of the council, that's correct. It's likely to require one. That is correct. That's what we had anticipated during the last rate study, is that there would be the need for additional. We are, as council sort of directed us at that time and as we did the public outreach, trying to get to more of a steady state where you're seeing only inflationary type of rate increases every year. That will come out of this study that is ongoing now and be presented to council in the future.
Councilmember Tomachoff.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So I just wanted to verify that when we do look at the rate study, we also are, we can look and see like how much would the rate increase generate? And could that be satisfied by possibly, if it's eligible, repaying the enterprise funds from the money that was sent to the NHL? Because it's my, we're paying, basically, the general fund is paying interest. I mean, it's costing money, and I don't know what the interest rate is or what the dollar amount is, but it's several million dollars, and even at a low interest rate, you know, interest is an extra expense that by carrying the balance in the enterprise fund is costing, it's costing more money to carry the balance, I guess is what I want to say. So I just wanted to be able to understand that hopefully will be an option and that we can look at whether we do or don't do that. I don't know what the consensus is going to be. I know that there was, I think that the biggest amount of money taken from the enterprise fund was from water, if I remember right. I wasn't on the council at the time, but I think that it was. So I just want to make sure that we have all the information before we make a decision on it, when we do have the rate discussion. Thank you.
This slide is a recap of the presentation. Again, this is our fifth budget workshop and capital improvement plan. We did have the two new projects that were added to the 10-year CIP. We have consensus on accelerating the amphitheater. We'll make those changes in the draft tentative CIP for council adoption. We have included a placeholder funding for capital projects that will be funded by the one-time revenues. And at this time, we'd like to see if we have council consensus on the changes, the three changes, two new projects, accelerating the amphitheater, and then the 10-year CIP.
Vice Mayor.
Yes.
You have my consensus, but I wanted to take a moment to thank you publicly for your hard work on putting this budget together. I know that it's not easy. Every year, we go through the drafts, the draft of the budget, and there are changes, and I know it has you scrambling to reproduce those changes and make sure that they get to us. I think your idea of presenting an interactive CIP chart was brilliant, but the problem was, was, at least for me, I didn't have time to schedule a study session to learn how to use it. I think that it would be beneficial in future years and perhaps if we had time, other than during budget season, to review how to use that material, that would be helpful. And so perhaps you would consider just scheduling meetings with each of the council members to give us a tutorial on that. But I do know that budget season is difficult for you all. I do recognize and appreciate your hard work in putting it together and presenting it to us. I know it's not easy, and we appreciate the effort. Thank you.
Anyone else do have consensus on the items? Like we do. Thank you.
Our next budget workshop will be on April 6. We'll change course and start discussing the operating budget. On the 6, we will be going through the operating budgets for the city court, engineering, budget and finance, non-departmental transportation, the city manager's office, code compliance, field operations, city clerk's office, human resources, innovation and technology, and community services. And with that, that concludes our presentation.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any further questions or comments? If not, we're adjourned. Thank you.